Hello, everyone. We're going to get started now. So it's 5:30 on Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, and I'll call this public hearing to order. So good evening to everyone who's joined us here in Salem and to those who are joining us remotely in Astoria, Medford, and Pendleton. On behalf of the Department of Consumer Services, Division of Financial Regulation, I welcome you to the inaugural hearing on prescription drug prices. My name is Andrew Stolphy. I'm the Oregon State Insurance Commissioner and the Administrator of the Division of Financial Regulation. The Division of Financial Regulation protects consumers and regulates insurance, depository institutions, trust companies, securities institutions, and non-depository products and services. We're part of the Department of Consumer and Business Services, which is the state's largest consumer protection agency. We're here this evening to talk about prescription drug prices, which are a major concern at a national and state level, which have been a major area of focus for our governor and our legislature for several years now. To help put our work tonight into its proper context, I want to first share with you all a few short stories submitted to us from the public for this hearing. First, there have been times in the past where I was unable to afford my asthma medication. There have been times where I've had to make my inhaler last longer than it should. I've also done asthma studies in the past in order to be able to afford my medication and survive with drug samples only. Next story submitted, as a diabetic nurse, I often found my patients would simply go without their diabetes medications because they could not afford them. We had a pharmacy at our safety net clinic that could provide lower-cost medications, but even with our lower prices, many patients could not afford insulin and other diabetes medications. And finally, my spouse needs to take Eliquis 5mg twice a day. A 90-day supply costs $1,343. Again, why so much? My spouse has nine different prescriptions that have to be taken. Another costs $400 for a 30-day supply. My spouse is retired and social security is only $1,200 a month. I continue to work to receive insurance benefits to cover those drug costs. I cannot retire until my spouse dies. I can't afford to. So these real-life stories highlight the importance of the work ahead of us and of the reason for our hearing tonight, which is to help unwrap the complex layers of the pharmaceutical supply chain and identify policy options for our legislature to better protect consumers. The first big step was taken during the 2018 legislative session when the legislature enacted the Prescription Drug Price Transparency Act, which established Oregon's Prescription Drug Transparency Program within the Department of Consumer Business Services. Part of that new law directed the department to hold this public hearing on prescription drug prices, as well as information reported to the department. And we'll talk a little bit more in a moment about what else the law required. So today's public hearing will be moderated by the panel seated up at the dais. I'll serve as the presiding officer for this public hearing, and I'd ask the other panelists to please introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Steiner-Hayward. I'm the state senator for District 17, Northwest Portland in Beaverton. I'm also a family physician by profession. I had the privilege of serving as one of the legislators on the task force that was set up by House Bill 4005. I'm looking forward to this hearing. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend all of it in person, so I'll be here for a while, and then I plan to watch the rest of it online.
Good evening. My name's Ron Noble. I'm the state representative for House District 24, which is essentially McMinnville up to Hillsborough, also on the task force and involved in healthcare committees and behavioral healthcare committees, and really happy to be able to be here tonight to listen and moderate.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dana Harganani. I'm a pediatrician, and I serve as the chief medical officer for the Oregon Health Authority, and I had the opportunity to serve as the co-chair on the task force.
My name's Rob Noes. I'm the state representative for House District 42, which is located in inner southeast and inner northeast Portland. I've been in the legislature now for three terms. I'm the vice chair of the House Healthcare Committee, and I'm the person that got sacked by Representative Greenlick, which ultimately led to me helping to author House Bill 4005.
Thank you. Also want to note, we're joined in the audience by Representative Prusak, a member of the House Healthcare Committee, and I point that out because tonight is her birthday.
Oh. I didn't know that when I saw you earlier.
Exactly.
Legislators are a weird breed.
So we're going to begin the public hearing tonight with a brief overview of the Drug Price Transparency Program and some of the data that we've received from Cassie and program staff. Following that overview, we've got some invited presenters who will discuss topics such as how a drug is priced from their professional and industry perspectives, and on the rising cost of drugs, such as multiple sclerosis drugs. During this part of the public hearing, the moderator panel may engage with the presenters to ask questions or clarify information. Finally, we'll accept public testimony and comment on prescription drug prices. I'll note for those in Salem, there is a sign-up sheet in the corner over there if you'd like to present during that portion, and for those in the satellite locations, there are also sign-up sheets. So we do have a limited time this evening, and during the public comment period, we'll do our best to get everyone up, but may have to limit some of the time during the public comment period. And with that, I'll turn things over to Cassie Susi and Antonio Vargas to give a presentation on our program and some of the data we've received.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for being here today. For the record, my name is Cassie Susi. I'm the program coordinator for the Drug Price Transparency Program. Tonight, we will turn on our clicker so we can move through some slides. Tonight, we'll give you an overview of the Drug Price Transparency Program and some of our preliminary results from the information that we've received from consumers, manufacturers, and health insurers. So to provide a brief overview for folks, set a foundation before we dive into our data. The goal of this program is to provide accountability for prescription drug pricing through transparency of specific cost and price information from pharmaceutical manufacturers and health insurers. This program began when the legislature passed House Bill 4005 in 2018, establishing one of the nation's first drug price transparency programs. So there's three main components to the program that make up the primary focus. The first is to receive new drug reports and annual price increase reports from manufacturers as specified by certain thresholds. The second is for health insurers to provide reports with their annual rate filings detailing their top 25 most costly and most prescribed drugs, and providing information about the effect of drug costs on premium rates. And the third major reporting component is from consumers, and we want all Oregonians to report to the department when they experience a price increase in their prescription drugs. This is an important component to the program and can be reported online, by phone, or by email. And this, it helps us give confirmation to the accuracy of the reports that we've received from manufacturers, and also helps us provide that clear picture of what's happening in Oregonians' lives regarding drug prices, which is the most important kind of factor of this. So moving into what we learned from our consumer notifications, to increase our public awareness and to inform Oregonians, we've provided outreach to 500 pharmacies throughout Oregon and distributed over 40,000 rack cards to try to meet consumers where they're at when they receive that price increase. So far, we've received some good information from the consumer notifications, and some of the themes that have emerged are multiple notices about insulin, prostate drugs, and thyroid drugs. Over half of the notices that we have received were for brand-name drugs. One person even linked a news article kind of explaining the reason why their price increase went up, and that was due to a recall. And we can, we further encourage consumers to report to us when they have experienced those price increases, or to report the stories that they have been reporting about the high costs that they're dealing with.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question? Thank you so much. Since I unfortunately won't be able to be here for Dr. Hartong's presentation, and you and I have talked about this briefly, I actually went online to try to report a substantial price increase in the drug that I get for my multiple sclerosis, which went from being billed $17,000 a dose to $20,000 a dose between July of 2018 and July of 2019, which is substantially more than a 10% increase in the course of a year. The problem is, the website itself is a little tricky to navigate for reporting a drug that goes under your medical benefit, and it's a little harder to figure out whether, how much I'm paying, because it's a little bit different for a drug that you get as part of your medical benefit than your pharmacy benefit. And so I know you guys have put an enormous amount of work into that, and I just want to be sure that people who are paying attention to their drug prices, that they may get, not directly from a pharmacy, also have the opportunity to report, because that's a drug that I've now been on for 12 and 1/2 years, and it's gone from being billed $5,000 to being billed $20,000 in the matter of 12 years. And that's well over 10% a year.
Absolutely.
So I just, I can absolutely call you guys and send you an email, but some people like to do this stuff at 10 o'clock at night, which is when I tend to do these things. And it would be nice if you could manage it online as well. So just a request from a consumer.
Absolutely. And as we move into our second year of the program, we're definitely looking at ways we can improve not only our consumer reporting, but all of the other components as well, and particularly knowing that the medical benefit is a little trickier to get that exact price, because it's usually, it's reported differently than a retail drug is reported.
Right.
All right, so moving on to our insurer reports, the nine health insurance companies that provide plans to Oregonians on the individual and small group market were required to provide reports to the program as part of their annual rate review process. All nine of the health insurers listed here provided lists of drugs that are most frequently prescribed to their enrollees, the drugs that are, which were most costly to cover, and the drugs which contribute most to the increases in health plan spending from year to year. And they also described the impact of prescription drug costs on insurance premium rates. And so these are all really important, because we know insurance premium rates are affected by drug costs and are increasing, and so this information will help us with that. So it's, again, it's important to note that these companies only comprise those who were required to submit health insurance rate reviews. So first, we combined the lists from the different companies in order to rank the most frequently prescribed, most costly, and the drugs that were the greatest increase to health plan spending. And these lists did include prescription drugs covered under both the pharmacy and medical benefits, so Senator Steiner-Hayward getting to your point about receiving information about all types of drugs that folks are using. These lists did not include any quantitative data, but they were lists to start with. We then worked with our colleagues at the Oregon Health Authority to kind of shed light to the amount of money that is paid towards these claims and the out-of-pocket expenses of these drugs, as well as the number of Oregonians filing these claims. This data was obtained through the All-Payer, All-Claims database, which includes healthcare claims and other administrative data from commercial insurers and payers, and public payers. All of this data, the data from APAC is preliminary and doesn't represent the entire insurance market. So with that preface, we'll dig into what we've seen with the information. So here we have the top five reported drugs that were most prescribed on our lists. We paired that with APAC data to show the numeric value of the claims that were received by health insurance companies. So here you can see that hydrocodone, acetaminophen, that was our top reported, most prescribed drug. It's a common opioid, and that was approximately $8.6 million. By comparison, these are the most costly drugs reported by health insurance companies. As you can see, there's quite a big difference on the ones that are most prescribed. Our top reported one was Humira, and that is close to $220 million in claims paid. And Humira is commonly used for rheumatoid arthritis, Crohn's, and plaque psoriasis. Moving on to the increase to plan spending, so health insurers also reported the drugs that caused the largest increase to their total spending from 2017 to 2018, and you'll see some of the similar drugs reflected in the increase to spending list.
This from this angle is almost impossible.
So one of the important things to consider is the number of people who filed these claims. And again, this is all information from APAC. So for example, more than 325,000 people filed claims for hydrocodone with that amount of $8.6 million of claims paid out. In contrast, Humira was around 6,000 people who filed claims at a cost of $220 million. As another example, 3,000 people filed claims for Truvada, which is an HIV drug, at an amount paid of $31 million. And one final comparison to show is for the MS drug, Akrevos, which is one of the highest increase to insurance plan spending that was reported to us, and insurance companies filed claims for $33.8 million for six, around 600 Oregonians.
So clarifying question about that. Akrevos is pretty new to the market. They came in at a price that was at or below some of the other MS drugs. It's the first MS drug to come in there. Do we have a sense of whether, I mean, I personally had a conversation with my neurologist about whether I was going to switch from Tisabri to Akrevos for a bunch of reasons. I'm curious about whether it's all new prescriptions, whether it's, I mean, do we have any sense? Because you can see it go up either because it got more expensive, or because people were switching, or there were new prescriptions for people who hadn't been on any disease-modifying agents before.
Yes, so this is-
I just happen to know this field pretty well. This area well, but-
So like I said, this information is from the All-Payer, All-Claims database. As we move into the second year of our insurer reporting, we're hoping to get more clarity about the different markets that our insurers, the drugs fall within all the different markets, and then also the quantitative amounts, which would give light to your question. But based on this information, this is more just to kind of give some context to the lists that were reported to us, trying to understand what this picture looks like for Oregonians. But we will be improving our reporting for the second year.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Antonio, who's going to talk more about our manufacturing reports.
Hi, I'm Antonio Vargas. I'm going to be talking, as Cassie said, about the third major component of our program, which is reporting from prescription drug manufacturers. So one thing to keep in mind while we're going through all this is that this is the first time this information has ever had to have been reported by manufacturers. So they're required to submit two types of reports to the program. When they introduce a new drug with a list price of $670 for a month's supply or higher, and they're also required to submit a report when they, when one of their drugs has a price increase of 10% or more and a list price of $100 for a month's supply. So I should clarify that when we say "list price," we're referring to what's known as the wholesale acquisition cost. So this is the starting price of a drug that's set by the drug's manufacturer. So I'm going to go through some of the data that's been submitted to us in these reports. This is all preliminary information. We're continually receiving additional information from the manufacturers concerning their reports. So indeed, once we, once the department receives a report, it begins a review process during which we request additional information from the manufacturers about their reports to clarify any of the things that have been reported in it, and this process is still ongoing. So we'll start by looking at some of the data from the annual price increase reports. So it's no secret that the United States pays more for drugs than many other countries. The data reported to the program is helping us understand how much more the U.S. pays for prescription drugs. So we require manufacturers to report the 10 highest prices of their drugs in other countries. This allows us to see where the U.S. price sits in relation. So what we did is, for each report, we compared the U.S. price reported to the highest reported non-U.S. price. So the U.S. price generally ranges from half the highest non-U.S. price to 25 times higher the highest, 25 times higher than the highest non-U.S. price. So what this graph shows, that's basically the width of this mountain here in the middle. The mountain shows the number of reports with each markup. So on average, the U.S. price was five times higher than the drug's highest non-U.S. price. So this is the red line you can see in the middle there that says five times. So there's two blips on the far right, past a 100 times markup. Those are for the drugs Medrol, sold by Pfizer, and Omefis, sold by Lundbeck. So let's drill down into this information a little bit. So for example, the median U.S. price, which is the price point that falls in the middle of the U.S. prices, was about $16,000 for cancer drugs. And the highest reported price in any other country for a cancer drug was $13,800 in the United Arab Emirates.
So our median is higher than the highest? Wow.
Right, yes. Our median is higher than the highest reported non-U.S. price. And this is typical of the other categories, not just cancer drugs. So for antidepressants, the middle-reported U.S. price was just over $1,000. The highest reported non-U.S. price was $470 in Malaysia. So for example, Zoloft is a common drug for treating depression, panic attacks, and PTSD. It's priced at $318 and $1,051, depending on dosage, in the U.S., and its price ranges from $1 to $470 in other countries. One more for comparison. The middle-reported U.S. price for cardiovascular drugs was $580, while the majority of the non-U.S. prices range from $5 to $164. So now let's take a look at some of the reasons manufacturers gave for increasing their prices. So we noticed that the reasons given mostly fell into three categories. The first was increased costs, typically for operating expenses and materials. Interestingly, manufacturers also reported increased costs due to amounts paid in rebates and to the use of copay assistance programs, both of which can affect the prices that consumers pay.
Interesting.
Okay. So the second category was market and economic factors, which included obligations to shareholders, lack of competition, and prices in other countries. The third category of reasons given for price increases related to research and development. Many drugs had price increases to fund the development of other drugs. So another element reported by manufacturers is on their patient assistance programs. So these are programs which consumers can use to reduce their copays or other aspects of paying for the drug. Just under half of the drug reports we received indicated that they had a patient assistance program. The reported assistance given by these programs to Oregonians ranged from $101 to $5 million. In total, the assistance provided to Oregon's consumers was more than $20 million. So up to now, I've been talking about the data collected in the annual price increase reports. Let's shift gears, and we'll talk about the reports manufacturers must submit when they introduce a new drug. So they must file a report within 30 days of introducing a drug. And so for most of the reports, and so far, most of the reports in the program has received have been for generic drugs. So these graphs here show the distribution of prices of new drugs reported to the program, and the height of each bar represents the number of reports with a price in that range. So on average, we've seen that brand-name drugs are about 10 times as expensive as generic drugs, though there is quite a bit of overlap in the prices. Both brand-name, we've received a lot of reports for both brand-name and generic drugs in the range from $1,000 to $10,000.
Even for generics?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, so these are, the threshold is $670 to report, so we're getting the high-cost generics that are reported to us.
Okay. Mm-hmm. And you'll notice that there's a large spike in the right in the brand graph. So those are all reports corresponding to a single drug, different packaging and dosages for that single drug. It's Zolgensma, and this has a list price of $2.1 million.
What does Zolgensma do?
It's for spinal muscular atrophy.
So in these new drug reports, manufacturers report factors that influenced how the drug's price was set. So contributing market factors included things like the number of competitors and the desired discount off of the reference drug. Patient population factors included how well the drug works and how prevalent the treated condition is. And business factors reported included desired rewards for innovation and recouping of costs. Now I'll turn the presentation back to Cassie, and she'll talk about how drug prices change over time.
All right. So this really brings us back to why we're here today. This program exists to provide transparency and accountability regarding drug prices, and several of the drugs that have been reported to our program show significant price increases over time, which ultimately affects the amount of money that these consumers are paying over time. So one example of how a drug price changes over time is Lenvima, which is used to treat different types of thyroid, kidney, and liver cancer. In 2015, the drug was introduced at a price of $12,500, and in 2016, this rose to $13,427. In 2017, there was a little bit of a price increase, up to $14,000. And then finally, at the beginning of 2018, Lenvima was priced at $15,000. By the end of the year, was $17,500. So to show this in comparison with the information we've received about other countries' prices, the highest price in the United States was $17,500, and in other countries, the range is anywhere from $10,500 to $2,400. So there's quite a big range in other countries, but all of the highest prices started below the price that this drug was introduced in the United States.
Director Stolphy, can I ask a question? So Cass, this is super interesting. This drug, is there, is there like a generic alternative or competitive, you know what I mean? Like if I go to the doctor or a nurse practitioner and I want to be treated, can I have a different choice of medicine, or is this the only one in its class that's doing this?
I am not sure Representative Noes on that. We can definitely take a look.
Be interesting to know.
It would be really interesting to know. I'll make note of that, and we'll connect back with you on that note.
I'm not, I mean, either way, it tells, it'll tell me something, you know, like, it's like at one level, it's almost price gouging if there's only, if that's the only thing that's out there that treats this. And then another level, it's just like, if there's other alternatives, I guess I want providers to know that they can prescribe something else.
So we'll look into that, but our next example also kind of illustrates how a price increases over time. So another example is a common cholesterol drug, Lipitor. In 2006, it was introduced at $346 in the United States. It steadily rose to double the initial price over the next 10 years, and since 2015, it has steadily increased and is now more than four times its introductory price currently in 2019. So in the United States, what was reported to us is Lipitor costs $1,400 or $1,500. And then in other countries, the range can be from what you see $220 in Thailand to $44 in Sweden. This is all information that was reported to us in our drug reports.
Was Thailand the- Was Thailand the next most expensive?
I believe so.
Okay.
So the data we presented today is preliminary, because we are still continuing to receive additional information from the manufacturers who have reported to us. And we're continuing to learn how to improve our data quality for the future years of this program. So in summary of what we've learned so far is that the US consumer typically pays about five times more than the highest price in other countries of the drugs that were reported to us. The average annual price increase for the drugs that were reported to us is 10% to 20% in that range. And new brand-name drugs are significantly more expensive than new generic drugs, as we've seen with our new drug reports. And there's several other bullet points, but all these graphs and this information will be published to the program website and will be also included in our annual report that we will be submitting to the legislature in December. One interesting piece of data that we also have up on our website is an interactive graph. So we've talked a little bit about these other country prices, and we have an interactive graph that shows the median US price and then where the other countries are priced at. So you can go online and find that. So this, all this data is just one piece of our puzzle towards understanding the effect of prescription drug costs on Oregonians. And again, we ask the public to submit their stories or their price increases to the department. Several of the stories we've received so far spoke of rationing drugs, as Commissioner Stolfe iterated at the beginning, rationing drugs to help with people who are breathing with asthma and COPD. This is our first year of the program, so we're looking forward to receiving more information in the coming years and further understanding this topic of drug pricing and the impact it's having on Oregonians.
Can I start by one thing? Thank you very much for this really informative presentation, first and foremost. Earlier, you talked about net price increases. Imagine Drug X. At the beginning of the year, Drug X costs $1,000. At some point in July, they increase the price to $1,150, which is a 15% increase, right? On December 20th, they decrease the price to $1,080, which is only an 8% net increase from where they were at the beginning of the year. And therefore, they wouldn't have to report, right? Even though for the majority of the year, their price was more than 10% above what it had been before. And then on January 5th, they turn around and raise it back up to $1,200, at which point they're still not raising it more than 10% over what it was, but it's gone up 20% over a year before. How does that play out in the reporting process?
So our definition of a net yearly increase is comparing averages. So the average for 2018 versus the average WAC price for 2017.
Ah, okay.
And that's to address that kind of problem that could occur, right, like the moving up and down and trying to account for that. So that's what our current definition is for.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
All right.
Cass, thank you. Any more questions from the panelists?
Fascinating.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're now going to move to the portion of our hearing where we hear from our invited presenters on prescription drugs. To begin with, we have Jane Horvath, who's a national expert on prescription drugs. She's going to give us a brief overview of how drug pricing works generally. Then we'll hear perspectives on how a drug is priced and finish with a presentation on the increased cost of MS drugs. And Jane is joining us over the phone. Jane, are you there?
Hello?
Yes, hi, we can hear you.
Okay. I have to confess, I'm having a very hard time hearing you guys, so.
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, okay, good. So yes, I have asked to talk very briefly about how drugs are priced and then a bit about the supply chain. And so I'm gonna move fast, because otherwise, I mean, we could spend five minutes or we could spend five hours. But, you know, please feel free to ask questions, okay? So in terms of how drugs are priced, in general, I heard what Kathy was saying, or Kathy, or Kylie, I didn't catch the name, about how, what manufacturers reported. But in my experience, drugs are not priced related to what it costs to develop the drug. One of the manufacturers reported that the drug, the price increase was initiated to support the R and D across the entire enterprise. And, you know, that sort of makes sense. But in general, manufacturers do not price drugs to recoup the price, the cost of developing that drug. And if you think about it, it makes perfect sense, because it may take seven years for a manufacturer to develop a drug to get FDA approval. And they're developing 10 drugs at the same time, and eight of them are toast. They never make it to market. And so what was the point of all that accounting for seven years? You know, and it's not, they're not just developing 10 drugs at a time, there's a lot going on inside the R and D department. So again, they just really don't track each molecule that way, in general. Instead, and some of this was reflected in the reporting, and it's consistent with my experience, which is, you know, that they're priced based on the market. Pricing is a lot more a function of market analysis than analysis of sunk costs. And sunk costs would be the R and D, sunk costs would be the plant, you know, developing and putting together a manufacturing plant specific to the drug, particularly if it's a biologic. And then even advertising can sometimes be considered a sunk cost. So instead, and they start thinking, your manufacturer starts thinking about price long before they submit, you know, for final approval to the FDA, long before that. You know, and they're always looking at the market and the competition. So what is already on the market to treat the disease that this product is, that they're developing is going to treat? And at what price are those products already on the market? Another thing that they would look at is, how good do they expect their product to be relative to the competition that is already on the market, or anything they can glean about competition that might come on the market behind them? Because again, you know, it takes a long time to develop a drug, and you can be generally aware of what other companies are working on Alzheimer's, for instance, or a new cardiovascular approach. Like, at that level, it's not like a trade secret. So how good is it going to be relative to the competition? Also, what kind of price concessions are that is the manufacturer going to need in terms of rebates or discounts to get market access for the drug? And again, that's a factor of how many drugs are out there in that space. It's all called sort of pricing and lifecycle management. Also, do they expect that they'll get approval over the years for this drug to treat more than one illness? That also affects sort of their thinking about launch price. How long does their patent last by the time they expect to get to market? A patent lasts 20 years. And in general, by the time a product makes it to market, it might have seven, seven to 10, I think more toward the 10-year mark, left on the patents before it can be direct generic competition. And then also, when do their competitors, their branded competitors on the market go generic, too? So these are sort of all the things that go into pricing, and it has really a lot more to do with the market than it does with sort of production and development costs. And I would also say that affecting price and price increases has to do with a constellation of other things, particularly price increases. So are they able to extend their patents? It's increasingly called a patent ficket. And some drugs, like Humira, which I think Kathy spoke to as being one of the more costly drugs in Oregon and everywhere else, you know, they've extended the patent. I think I read somewhere that they have like 23 years of patent on that product instead of seven.
Wow.
You know, once it got to market, you know, they've extended it for so, so many times. Also, companies do a lot to delay generic entry. They also do a lot, particularly in the biologic space, to delay entry of branded competition, which, you know, the more you can, like, strong-arm and use your elbows to keep your competition at bay, the more ability you have to take a lot of price, increase your prices. You know, you have the field to yourself in a lot of ways. And that's what companies try to do, keep the field to themselves. And then there can also be a lot of pressure on stock price. I contend that the industries I are always facing, Wall Street, and Wall Street is always putting a lot of pressure on the industry, too. It sort of cuts, it's a sort of a very interesting relationship, I think. And the other thing about ex-US pricing, so just to let you know, you know, obviously, we all know, and was stated here a couple times already, that, you know, we pay the highest prices in the world. But the ex-US prices, the prices overseas are just, there is some nuance to it that I just want everybody to be aware of. So a drug in another country might already be off patent, so, and that clearly affects the price overseas. Obviously, that's not every situation at all. I'm just saying there are some extenuating circumstances that would explain some of this big differential. And also, companies in general, at least the major ones that I'm familiar with, actually do do pricing for low-income countries, middle-income countries, and high-income countries. That's usually part of the thinking in the companies that I'm aware of.
Maybe it could be an average of the high-income.
Again, it doesn't explain all of the differential, but to have a, you know, a fair debate, it would be important to know those things. So that's all I was really going to say on pricing. And then Kathy, do you still want me to run through supply chain stuff quickly?
Much time you have. I just have a quick question I want to ask her.
Yeah, well, maybe, I think we have some questions for you, Jane. Is that all right?
Okey-dokey.
Yeah.
Jane, this is Representative Noz. How are you this evening?
I'm doing really well, and you?
Not too bad. I have a question to ask you about, earlier, we were sort of having an overview of what sort of drives up the price, and the manufacturers were revealing some of the things that caused the price of medications in the United States to go up. I think I've asked you this once before, but I don't remember your answer, so I'm going to ask it again. Can we eliminate rebates and just say you can't offer them, and then just take that tool out of the mix, and then it's just a straight-up negotiation on price? And is that even a good idea? I mean, maybe that, and is that even a good idea?
So my thought, and, you know, I actually sat down at that time, I think it was a couple years ago now, Representative Noz.
I've been at this for six years.
I don't think, I don't think a state can do it.
Okay.
I don't think it'll be effective, because, you know, the pricing is set elsewhere, you have PBMs that operate from out of state. I will re, I'll go back and look at it again, but the first time I spent time on it, I really thought one state couldn't do it. Now, I think the federal government, even though they yanked the rule that that was going to take us somewhere, even though a lot of, a lot of concerns about.
You're not going to implement that rule?
I think it was potentially going to be very effective. And, but I think at the federal level, it can be, I think at the state level, there's a host of legal and then just sort of market-based issues. I don't think it would have the effect that you think it would have in the state.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for answering.
Any other questions on pricing? Not that you can't have.
Jane, this is Dana Harganani. One more question on the piece around rebates and also the drug pricing overseas. Can you just, I know this could be another five-hour conversation, but just briefly talk about how does the, the price concessions look differently abroad, and how big of a difference does that play in the pricing?
I honestly didn't hear the question well enough. Could you restate it maybe closer to the mic?
Here, here.
Try on a different mic. Does that work, Jane?
Yeah.
Great. The question was just a brief snapshot, if you could, about the role of rebates in overseas pricing.
What is the role of rebates in overseas pricing?
Correct.
Okay, sorry, I just, for some reason, well, I'm on a cell, and it shouldn't be, I guess. So it's really interesting that you asked that question. I think rebates are becoming a much bigger deal overseas. And, you know, it started here as a tool, you know, a market-based tool, and they weren't always quite as applicable to sort of, you know, a national pricing system. And the pharma has sort of figured out, and obviously, we can't know anything specific about it, because they're always very secret, but I'm sort of getting the definite impression, particularly Vertex, Vertex actions in Europe have sort of made me realize the sort of scope of what I think is going on. You know, and Vertex with their drug or can be, you know, which was a definite improvement in the treatment of cystic fibrosis, and a very important drug for patients, but the price is like astronomical. And more and more people are living long, long lives, which is a great thing with cystic fibrosis, whereas most people with cystic fibrosis used to die young, unfortunately. But we still have these incredibly high-priced drugs taking on a longer, you know, a longer-lived population. Anyway, in Europe, a lot of the governments said, not here. Like, you know, we're not doing that drug at that price here. And Vertex, you know, really stood their ground, and it took a long time for them to reach accommodation with the National Health Service in Great Britain. But they reached accommodation, which clearly, there's something going on there, there's some sort of secret rebate. And then, I don't know, maybe three months later, I read that Vertex had reached accommodation with Scotland and the Scottish National Health Service. So I do see there's like all these indications that rebates are becoming more the status quo in Europe, you know, which is going to make sort of benchmark pricing a lot more difficult. So, and it's going to make the appearance of higher prices in Europe than what they actually are after these secret discounts. So, you know, we're never, in my personal view, to Representative Noz's point, we do have to get rid of rebates. You know, we got to get rid of them, and we have to have a more transparent system, or we're never going to get ahead of this.
Well, thank you, Jane. We're unfortunately running a bit long on time, so might not have time for you to talk about the supply chain, but maybe I can ask one final question, which touches on that and some of the topics we've been talking about. Could you say if there are any differences in the supply chain as we see it here in the US versus supply chains outside the US, and if that influences the drug prices as well?
So differences in supply chain between here and other countries?
Correct.
Okay. You know, I don't really feel, I'm not an expert in that issue, and I apologize, but I don't think that there really are. I mean, it just, you know, you need the wholesalers to get the drug, to take possession of the drug and make sure that they're distributed. You need repackagers to take these quantities and pack them special, for special use, say, blister packs in nursing homes, or samples in doctors' offices, or whatever it is. And so you need that no matter what countries you're in. Now, if you're thinking about sort of more the financing chain and like insurers and PBMs, I am unaware of the extent to which the pharmacy benefit manager business model exists in Europe. And they may not, because the systems are slightly, in some cases, quite more nationalized than they are here, and in others, you know, they're run by funds. There's just a lot of different sort of business and government models in Europe that may not be so conducive to the pharmacy benefit manager. But the actual moving of the pills around, I think, is pretty much the same.
Okay. Well, Jane, thank you very much for joining us. I think it was a good baseline information about the supply chain. Again, thank you, Jane. So at this time, I'd like to call up our other panelists, if you can please join us here. Each panelist will have five minutes, and please do try to keep to the five minutes to discuss their role or experience in how a drug is priced. And those presentations, we followed up with any questions or discussions from the And I think we're following this order. So there you go. So Amelia first. And please, please do introduce yourselves when you first start.
Sure. Hi, my name is Sumal Pandya. I'm a deputy vice president at Pharma, with Pharmaceutical Research Manufacturers of America. We're a trade association that represents over 30 of the largest innovative biopharmaceutical manufacturers in the country. And thank you, I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having me. This is not working, sorry.
Hold on. We won't let it take from your five minutes.
Thanks.
We'll yield your time back.
Okay, try it now.
Very good. Okay. This slide represents, we're talking a lot of this, but this is a very exciting time in the development of new medicines in this country. There's been tremendous innovation, innovation and scientific advancements. But we're here to talk about costs, so I want to address those subjects. But we're here to talk about costs, so I want to address those subjects. This information on this slide represents information that's been publicly reported by these three entities. Express Scripts and CVS Health are two of the largest PBMs in the United States. Express Scripts covers 80 million, has 80 million covered lives. In 2018, they said that their prescription medicine spending growth, so their costs for drugs, went up by 0.4%, once you factor in rebates and discounts that were offered in the system. So, their cost went up by 0.4%. CVS Health publicly reported that their cost went up by 3.3% in 2018. CVS Health covers 90 million covered lives. So, these two are PBMs who are primarily prevalent in the pharmacy benefit. They have some exposure in the medical benefit, but mostly, it's the pharmacy benefit. The third one you have there is IQVIA, which is the largest data aggregation consulting firm in the United States. They used to be called IMS, and you might be more familiar with that name. They reported that prescription medicine spending, net of rebates and discounts, went up by 4.5%. Now, IQVIA is capturing pharmacy and medical benefit drugs. This is net of rebates and discounts. These are not numbers that you are typically seeing in the media, and these are not numbers that employers and plan sponsors are experiencing, but these are the, this is the spending growth that is, that PBMs are publicly reporting. So, there's a difference between what they, how much they have to spend, and then there's a, there's a markup, or there's a difference between themselves and what the final plan sponsor, the cost that the plan sponsor incurs. This chart is published publicly by IQVIA. Nothing that I'm presenting here is proprietary to Pharma. This tracks price growth. We've talked a lot about prescription medicine pricing and price growth over time. The top line represents list price growth. The bottom line represents net price growth. The difference between the two are the rebates, discounts, and other price concessions that manufacturers give to the system. The amount of money that the price concessions that are given are not trivial. In 2018, they totaled $166 billion, which means that in 2018, they said that across all market segments, so commercial, Medicare, Medicaid, everything that's in the marketplace, that the net prices for brand medicines grew by 0.3%. This has been independently reported by IQVIA, again, something that's not typically discussed. We talked a little bit about, in the previous presentations, about list price growth over time, and some products that had high list price growth. One of the things that is not well-known about our supply chain is that CVS Health has publicly reported that over 90% of their brand manufacturer contracts contain a provision called price protection, or it's an inflation protection. That's a stop-loss. It basically says to a manufacturer, "We are going to contract with you the maximum amount of a list price increase you can take over a period of time, and if you take a price increase above that, you have to rebate the difference back to the PBM." Now, those are provisions in, commonplace provisions in PBM contracts with manufacturers, but those, that savings from price protection is not shared with consumers, and can or cannot be shared with the plan sponsor, or may or may not be shared with the plan sponsor. Depends on the negotiating sophistication of the plan sponsor. Otherwise, they would keep that money. And so, that you're seeing for the various prices that you are seeing here. These rebates and discounts that we see in the country, the question came up, you know, where are they versus, the list prices in the U.S. versus other countries? List prices are higher here than they are in many other countries, because other countries import, have government price setting, mandated government price setting. But the level of discounting that is happening in the United States is far greater than what's happening in those other countries. There is discounting happening in those countries, too, off of what their set list probably prices are, but it's a fraction of what it is in the United States. This is a busy slide, which I can't get into in detail right now, but this is published in a report that Pharma put out in November of 2017. It's called "The Follow the Dollar Report." This talks about insulin. This is a lot that we talked about. Insulin's been a topic of heavy conversation, about how much patients are having to pay for this medicine. At that time, the average rebates that we calculated were about 65% in this field. They're now over 70%. This is when the patient's in the deductible. It shows that for a $400 insulin product, the manufacturer retains about $88. The patient pays the full freight, or it's the full amount because they're in the deductible.
Right.
The insurer and the PBM don't pay anything, because the patient's paying the full amount of the drug, but they walk away with the rebate that was paid. So, this, we feel that what is, was the situation that you see in this case is the strongest example for why manufacturer rebates and discounts, especially when patients are in the deductible, should be passed through to the patient at the point of sale. What I talked to you about before was that list prices, I mean, that net prices are not going up by a hard, large amount, and that spending is not going up by a large amount. That doesn't mean there's not a big problem in our system. There's a huge problem in our system, and the problem is how much patients are having to pay for their medicines. There's been a systematic cost shift to the patient, which is increasing their cost burden. There is no reason why a patient should have to pay the full list price of a product, when the product's being discounted heavily by the manufacturer. Every one of those entities you see in that supply chain, the wholesaler, the pharmacy, the PBM, and the health plan, or at least through the health plan, they make their revenue off of the list price of a medicine for the, for a particular drug. So, as a list price goes up, they make more. They get a percentage of the list price as part of their revenue, which creates a terrible misaligned incentive in the system to see the list prices move, because they have, there's a tremendous amount of market power that's there. In addition to each of these entities being highly consolidated, there also is a tremendous amount of vertical and horizontal integration in the system, whereby in many cases, the PBM, the specialty pharmacy, the health plan, I'm sorry, the health plan, and, or regular retail pharmacy are all part of the same parent company. Let's hear. This is not my slide. This was a slide that was presented by Dr. Neeraj Sood from the USC Schaefer Center at an NAIC call in August. Try your attention to the last bullet point. He talks about the consolidations in the marketplace, but he says that of $100 spent on drugs, $42 goes to PBMs, wholesalers, pharmacies, and insurers. Again, not a Pharma study, this is independently that it's done. Essentially, what it's saying is that drug spending overall in the country is not a large share of overall healthcare spend. Brand manufacturers, what they retained, at least in 2015, is the last data that I have, accounted for about 7% of total U.S. healthcare spending. The United States spends about four and a half times that amount on hospitals. Now, the two and a half before, that 7% of healthcare spending is after rebates and discounts have been accounted for. Four and a half times more than that is by hospitals. Over a third of U.S. healthcare spending is on, it's on hospital spending that is there. This is important, because when an employer comes to you and says, "You know, 20% of my healthcare spend is on drugs," well, or prescription medicines, what Dr. Sood is saying is that almost half of that amount isn't going to a brand or generic manufacturer, it's going to somebody else in that, in that overall supply chain, which we feel is something that needs to be addressed, and to be able to reduce the amount that patients have to pay for their medicines. And finally, I know I'm in the interest of time, this is, these are some more proactive solutions which we feel that could be taken in states to increase the affordability of medicines for patients who are trying to get access to these life-saving cures.
I don't disagree with some of those. I have two quick questions.
Sure.
Mr. Commissioner. So, my first question is, and it might almost be better directed at DCBS than it is at Mr. Sami, but shouldn't rebates that insurance companies get from drug manufacturers or PBMs, shouldn't that eventually be reflected in the rates that they charge the payers? Like, you know, I don't like this coupon system, because I think it just makes everything look super cloudy, and I can't understand what's really going on, you know? Though you explained it very well. But shouldn't that discount eventually show up in what I pay in premium?
Now...
If it's being calculated properly?
What insurers are saying, insurers say that, that these rebates and discounts are used to keep premiums lower for all people who are covered. I have two issues with that statement. First issue is that this is not what insurance is for. Insurance is to spread risk. If I'm a person who's vulnerable, and I need, I need a particular medicine, there's very little in our overall healthcare system that people can afford without insurance. I mean, we spent $3.5 trillion on insurance, on healthcare last year. There's very little in our system that you can afford without insurance. So, the idea that an individual who is most vulnerable has to pay the highest amount is just fundamentally wrong. Second thing, second issue that I have with that...
I agree with that.
Second issue that I have with that is that money's fungible. So, when someone says that "I'm taking the money that I'm getting from these rebates, and I'm putting it towards all, 100% towards premiums," well, I worked for three health plan CFOs over nine years, working on the insurance side as well. There's no just, there is no documentation that that is accurate. Part of it could well be done to keep premiums lower, other, that money could also be used for other things. There's no such thing as like, you know, orange money, or blue money, or green money, that I'm going to use it just for this one particular purpose. It goes into a pot.
Sure.
And then that money is in use for any number of different things. So, there's no way to say definitively that all of those $166 billion has gone for premium reduction. But patients need to be protected. They are having to pay way too much for the cost of their medicines, and this is hurting our overall system. Because when patients have to pay too much for their medicines, they don't take their medicines. It affects adherence. And how much they have to pay is in a direct reflection of insurance benefit design. Insurance benefit design determines how much they have to pay, not the list price of a drug. All right? So, I'm basically saying is that they need to be able to be protected, so that they're able to afford their drugs, so they take the medicines that are doctor-intended, and that will improve adherence, and then reduce unwanted things like emergency room visits and hospitalizations, which increase cost of the overall system.
Okay. Final question. And it may be that we need to have a more robust rate-setting process in the state of Oregon, so that rebates are part of our rate-setting and not just fungible. What do you think about my suggestion that we get rid of rebates?
I, we, Pharma supported the rebate, OIG rebate rule that came out this summer. It was pulled back, unfortunately.
Okay.
That rule would have passed 100% of rebates to patients at the point of sale. There's another bill out there right now in the, in the federal side. It's in the, it's in the Senate Help Committee. Section 306 of that bill requires 100% of rebates and fees that are retained by, that are collected by middlemen in the system to be passed through, not to the patient, but to the final plan sponsor, to the employer, or the, or the health plan. That's an interesting idea. So, the middleman in the system would no longer be paid as a percent of the list price, but they'd just get a flat fee for this, a fair market value, flat fee for the services that they render.
Which PBMs used to be.
That's what it used to be. But that would turn, that would make them agnostic, theoretically agnostic to what the list price is. So, they're not, they're not picking a drug based on how much money they will make on the drug. They're picking the drug which is the best drug, which is the most appropriate medicine for the patient. And that's something that maybe could be taken up on the state side, but that's something that you have to discuss in more detail.
So, a question, Representative, the...
Go, that was good.
Health insurers in Oregon do account for rebates received. We look at that, the department looks at that during the rate review process, and it currently, it varies per insurer, but it's about a 2% to 3% reduction in premiums...
Based on the rebates.
Based on the rebates received. So, a question for you, Samiell. On this last slide, bottom-left box, you talk about certain medicines getting first-dollar coverage. Can you elaborate which medicines that would, those would be?
I mean, it could be for chronic diseases, for the most part. I mean, we spend a ton of our money, about 90% of healthcare spending is in one way or another to treat chronic disease. And so, there's, there's medicines that could, doesn't have to be, even, doesn't even have to be a brand medicine. It also could be a generic medicine that people need, that you would end up having, if you were to look at the overall system, how much the, how much the patient's having to spend for the medicine, and how much the savings would be on the back end if they actually were able to take it and have high adherence levels. There's analyses that have been done on this, which we could share with you. IMS did a study a while back, which said that if people took their medicines the way their doctors intended them to, that the savings to the system was about $213 billion a year. But they don't take them, that their adherence levels are lower, oftentimes because the out-of-pocket cost that they're required to pay for them is just too high.
Okay. So, one more question, we might come back after everyone else, but one more question.
Thank you for your presentation. We received questions from the public, and I wanted to share one for your response. Why are the costs so high for some medications that have been on the market for years, especially life-saving drugs like insulin?
Insulin, like I said, the list prices are high. The net prices are a lot, lot lower. That's why we believe that those rebates and discounts that manufacturers are paying should be passed on to the, to the consumer. Now, keep in mind that the reason why manufacturers pay rebates in the first place is to get access on insurer formularies. If an insurer covers 80 million or 90 million people, and you're not on that formulary, that's pretty devastating for a company. All right? So, you're trying to get onto that particular formulary, and you're, and you're providing a, you're providing discounts to make the financial situation tenable enough for the insurer to cover your product. One of the things that Representative Nos asks is, "Well, why just get rid of rebates?" So, if all four of you guys had brand products, all had similar list prices, all had big rebates, all had similar net prices, but Representative Nos said, "You know what? I'm not going to play this game anymore. I want to drop..."
I have to, but...
Right. But say, say I drop, say I drop the list price, all right? Now, everybody in that system makes less money on his drug than they do on yours. Are they, are they just going to say, "Hey, that's okay. I'll just take less money, and that'll be fine"? Probably not. What they're most likely going to say is, "You know what? I like your drugs better than his. And your drugs are going to get the better formulary position. I'm making less on yours. This may not, you may have trouble getting formulary access." You lose access to 80 or 90 million people in the country. One, you'll be looking for a job if you're a person doing contracting, and two, that's going to be pretty devastating for the financial bottom line of that company. Thank you.
Just to clarify, so the, the price concessions that you're speaking to and impact on price, are you saying then those are specific year-over-year increases, those charts we were seeing before, when a drug's been on the market? Those pressures will continue edging that price up over time continually?
What typical, yes. What typically happens is list prices continuously, you see, start seeing increases over time, but the rebating increases over time, too, as you have more competition. That's how competition works in our country, in our, in our system. 90% of all medicines utilized in the United States are for generics. Every one of those generics used to be a brand.
Right.
And it's a built-in cost containment that prescription medicines have in our system that does not exist anywhere else in the healthcare system that we have today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samiell. So, let's move on to the second presenter, I believe, Bill, that's you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Head, Senior Director of Government Affairs with the Pharmaceutical Care Management Association, which is the PBM trade association. PBMs administer this prescription drug benefit for 266 million Americans across government plans, private plans, Medicare, Medicaid, union trust, et cetera. PBMs are projected to save payers $650 billion over the next 10 years. I feel compelled to respond on the rebate points made. I'm not sure I really learned a lot about the pharmaceutical manufacturer role in the supply chain, but I did learn on the opinions of the pharmaceutical industry with respect to my industry and, and others, so I feel compelled to respond to that. Rebates exist throughout the supply chain. They're not unique to PBMs and manufacturers. They exist between manufacturers and wholesalers, who buy from the manufacturer and sell to the pharmacies. They exist between pharmacies and wholesalers, who buy from the, pharmacies buy from the wholesalers and sell to consumers. But we tend to focus a lot on the PBM, because that is a big piece of it, and I appreciate that. We view rebates really has the only way to exert any kind of pressure, downward pressure, on pharmaceutical manufacturers to make the price more affordable for the purchaser. When the rebate rule come out, came out, that was mentioned, we made, that was our, the crux of our comment. But we also said, "If you are compelled to want to do it on a, you know, consumer level, we'll make that work, but we think you're going to be throwing money away." And it's worth noting that the rebate rule was pulled, I think probably just a couple of months before it was going to go into effect, and, and no small measure, because the Congressional Budget Office scored it, and their analysis was, "Yes, some consumers, some Medicare beneficiaries will experience lower costs for prescriptions, but every beneficiary will have higher premiums if we, if we do it this way, if you just pass the rebate on to consumers," to the tune of $177 billion over 10 years. So, they pulled the rule. And the gentleman made this point, too. 90% of drug suspends are generic, 10% are brand. Of that 10%, maybe, and I'll defer to you, I think 4% to 6% are rebate-eligible, and by that, I mean, there is a competitive therapeutic equivalent that you can play off of, off of each other. I will note that the example Kathy gave on Lynvima, I'm willing to bet if you track the increases, they were, it was originally approved as a, to treat thyroid cancer, and then kidney cancer, and then lastly, I think, liver cancer. And in each approval process, they did not have a competitor. So, you look at the brands that don't have rebates and don't have competition, those prices increase, you know, without any restraint whatsoever. And this isn't just us saying this. In 2018, the Office of Inspector General at HHS did a study and say, "After accounting for rebates, drugs' prices went up." In other words, it, we weren't the cause of the price increase, that despite rebates or after accounting for rebates, they still increased significantly. And then, just a couple of months ago, the GIO did a report, and, and this is something I don't get, get stopped a lot. In the commercial market, about 95% of our rebates are passed through to the payer. And the payer always decides what they want to do. They can have 100%. They can, they determine what they want to, what percentage they want, and then what they want to do with it. That's the payer's, the purchaser's prerogative to do. But in Medicare, GIO found that 99.6% of rebates were passed through to the Part D plans. And I think if you, if you look, and not that it's a perfect market, but Part D plan And I think if you, if you look, and not that it's a perfect market, but Part D plan sponsors have been able to keep premiums relatively stable in, in that market. I mentioned the, the rule, if, you know, if you can mandate that, you know, we pass it through, whatever you want to do. But we really want some, you know, other than Pharma saying that's the reason for their price increases, we have three government agencies, separate government agencies, saying that rebates aren't the problem. And I think the, the evidence is, is there. I will, I do want to cite the one example that was given on the rebate for the individual buying the insulin. Rebates aren't done on an individual basis, and they aren't done at the time of the transaction. It's often at least a quarter, a couple of quarters, sometimes a year, before the rebate's actually processed and given back to the purchase, or passed on to the purchaser. So it's not a, we don't currently have a point-of-sale rebate for the patient or for the, for the purchaser. It just doesn't, it doesn't work on that basis. So you can give an individual a high deductible plan, and yes, the plan is benefiting, but then they have beneficiaries who have a fight-aller copay, and the plan is paying more for that individual. So it, you can't, you can't pull out an individual and say that it works this way. PBMI, which is an independent organization that looks at pharmaceutical issues, broke down the, the dollar this way. 65% of the pharmaceutical dollar goes to pharmaceutical manufacturers, 25% goes to pharmacies, 6% goes to PBMs, and 4% goes to wholesalers. I do want to make one final comment on transparency. We absolutely support transparency, but we want demonstrable transparency that benefits the patient. And you may be aware that CMS has come out and they are proposing a requirement on Part D plans to have real-time benefit tools available to beneficiaries beginning in 2021. That means that when a patient is in the doctor's office, they have all the access to the formulary, their plan design, their benefits, and the doctor and the patient can make the most informed decision about what's the best drug for that patient at that time. And if there's an appeal necessary, if the drug that the doctor wants to prescribe is a higher copay, they can do it on-site, and that way the patient isn't going to the pharmaceutical counter and getting, excuse me, getting sticker shock. So we do support transparency, but something that results, excuse me, that results in the patient, helping the payer and the patient at the counter, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to maybe let the last two panelists talk, just to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak, and then we can ask some more questions.
Great, thank you. My name is Mihal Patel. I'm a VP of Pharmacy at Pacific Source Health Plans, a regional nonprofit health plan started about 85 years ago in Lane County. And just wanted to give our perspective on basically how drugs are added to the formulary and how that process works, and really what, how members' cost share works. So the way drugs are added to a formulary or the list of covered drugs is really through our pharmacy and therapeutics process, which is really an independent committee set up by the health plan, composed of independent practicing physicians and pharmacists that come together on a monthly basis, at least within our health plan, to help review drugs and look at its clinical effectiveness, as well as cost-effectiveness, to help decide whether drugs should be added to the formulary or not. They also help review and establish what the clinical criteria protocols should be, if there's any utilization management protocols that should be in place to ensure drugs are used properly. As a health plan, it's, we are the stewards of our members' dollars to make sure that they're getting the best bang for their buck in terms of coverage, as well as cost effectiveness, cost effectiveness of healthcare. In addition, our P and T committee also helps ensure that when new drugs are released out to the market, they're looking at those drugs on a timely basis to compare the effectiveness of those new agents compared to older, older drugs on the market, to help decide whether those new drugs should be added and at what tier. And so we use different tiers on the formulary to help really, and set up a utilization of the lowest, and lowest cost and most cost-effective drugs. Typically, drugs on Tier 1 are usually generic drugs, Tier 2 are usually preferred brands, Tier 3 are really more of the higher-cost brands, and so on and so forth. In addition, how beneficiaries actually, their cost share really is defined by the type of plan design that they have signed up for, whether they've signed up for, through an individual plan, where they have full exposure to what those different plan designs are, and full options to decide what works best for them and their families, or whether it's through their employer, or if they're covered through Medicaid or Medicare, those different plan designs also would apply to the member, and those different cost shares would apply. Happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
We'll come back to that in a, in a second. Ms. Martin?
Hi, my name is Tammy Martin. I'm with Oregon Family to Family Health Information Center. It's a grant program funded through the Affordable Care Act. Every nation, every state in the nation has a family-to-family health information center. Oregon's is housed at Oregon Health Sciences University. And we are unique in that we are staffed by family members that have either a family member experiencing a disability or a complex medical health condition. So we help, it's no cost to the public, from zero to age 25, help people and families navigate these complex, complex health systems. Some of the things we do is help parents appeal insurance denials, find funding for durable medical equipment, or payer of last request. Every time they come up against a wall, they have a number they can call. Sometimes it's just as simple as sitting down and helping to fill out a form, because that's the hurdle for the family to get through. I am a parent of a 12-year-old who experiences Down Syndrome, and he also is on the autism spectrum and is medically complex. So from the parent perspective and the family perspective, that's our voice here in Oregon. And a story that I would share is from a young woman who experiences fibromyalgia, migraines, mental health conditions, and now PTSD. She did pretty well until she was 25, and then no longer was covered under her parents' health insurance policy. She got a job that had health insurance, but when she lost it, it was very challenging for her because of her medications. Lamictal was the most important. She said that, at the time she lost her job, it cost $1,500 for a 30-month supply, a 30-day supply, excuse me. So lack of access to her meds eventually led to mental health crisis, inpatient hospitalizations. At both points, the system still didn't help support or sustain her. She became homeless, and, and the trauma increased. Her answer, her solution was, she was able to apply disability services. And at that point, within seven months, she was receiving disability and had help starting to put back the medications that she needed to deal with the muscle pains from the fibromyalgia, the mental health-related, as well as migraines. So currently, as she sits now, she has 15 medications a month that she, that she uses. Five of these require the doctor to send the insurance company a prior off paper each month for her to fill it. I have the list if you want the names. I don't know that I would be able to say them, but I can try. She currently can't get access to ROPAX for her migraines, so she has to get a monthly shot, but she has nothing to help her with breakthrough migraines. And on the average, I asked her, so in a year's time, every month, how many times do your meds not refill on time? Right? So she figured on the average that every month, at least six weren't filled before they ran out, and this woman also doesn't drive. So she, and I'll leave you with her quote, "We need more care and affordable meds with less complication to access. Why must it be a crisis-before-care model, where people must experience trauma or desperation before they can get what they need from a doctor or medication?" So we're out there on the ground running, helping families navigate these complex systems.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Martin.
You're welcome.
Good question, please.
I do, thank you. Bill, maybe you can help clarify something. I've, trying to figure out during my time on the task force, the last year and during the 19 session, I'm just trying to understand if PBMs are paid a percentage on the negotiated wholesale acquisition price, what motivation is there for PBMs to keep the price down?
Because it's not our money, it's the, it's the payers. So in the contract, the payer will determine what they want to spend, and it's their money. So they can, they can pay us a, a, a flat fee, they can do it on a percentage of, you know, the rebate, however they want to structure it financially, but it's the purchaser's money at the end of the day, if that makes sense.
And I think you answered, my, my next question is, so the rebate is considered as part of the negotiation for the WAC price?
Well, we don't, we don't, we won't deal with WAC. We'll do AWP in terms of how we would negotiate
Okay.
with the plan and the pharmacy, but we don't, we won't deal in WAC.
Okay.
Because we don't, we don't buy and sell drugs. Does that answer?
As clear as I've been able to get over the last two years.
Sophie, my question's for Mr. Patel.
Sure.
So I, I followed your presentation about what it is that you do when, to encourage patients to use generics and more cost drugs. What is it that your business does to be able to, what tools do you have to negotiate a better price from the manufacturer?
Yeah, so our, our hands are kind of tied, as, as others have mentioned, we don't set the price, right? The manufacturers set, set the list price, and so we work with, we work with many
You refuse to pay, right? You could say, no, I'm going to use another drug.
Well, yeah, absolutely. We can, and that's
On the class.
Our, our only really tactic is really around formulary design, right? And to ensure we have the most cost-effective drugs on our formulary. And so we also work with PBMs to help negotiate really aggressive rates with our retail partners, right? So the pharmacies that are actually dispensing the drugs, we work with our PBMs to hold them accountable, to ensure that the reimbursement rates are set appropriately at the pharmacy level. But in terms of being able to control the, the price, we unfortunately don't have that control, since the, the list prices are what the manufacturers come up with.
Mr. Patel, I'm going to ask you a question we received from the public. Why do insurance companies stop covering drugs? Why do they get to choose what medications are allowable regardless of what a doctor prescribes?
Yeah, that's a great question. And actually, you know, we try to ensure that patients aren't stopped on any type of therapy that they're continuing on. So we have continuity of care protocols and, and guidelines in place to ensure patients are able to continue therapy if, if that treatment works. There's multiple reasons why a drug may be moved off a formulary or even changed on formulary positioning, whether it's new competition that comes out, a drug actually could be shown as less effective, it could be another new agent that comes out that shows more effectiveness. There's even older drugs, drugs that have been on the market that have shown to
This is ending now, as requested by the host. Please hang up.
There are also older drugs that have been on the market for quite a few years that now have come out with studies that's saying that it could actually be harmful. And so, you know, as I mentioned before, our P and T committee actually evaluates that information on a monthly basis to ensure that we're providing the most cost-effective and safest medications on the market.
Mr. Panja has been trying to say something.
I
Quickly, one small point. It was brought up about the rebate rule when it was pulled back, that it was because it was a high CBO score, $177 billion over 10 years. The reason for that score was, we didn't agree with the methodology, they, they don't use dynamic scoring, they use a very static scoring formulary approach. But Part D is, is, only covers prescription medicines. All right? So what they're basically saying, the money's got to come from somewhere. So if you, if you send those rebates to the patient, it doesn't go to the plan sponsor, it increases the plan sponsor's cost. But the denominator's only prescription drug spending. In the broader market, with regard to the commercial market, United Healthcare about a year ago made, made an announcement that for their fully insured business, they were going to pass 80% of the rebate through to the patient at the point of sale. And I was there when they made the announcement, it was at a PCMA forum, and they basically, and the word that was used was, the effect on premiums was, the word was negligible, because you're spreading out risk over wide variety of healthcare services in the broader market, whereas in Part D, it's only limited to prescription drugs. So as a percent of the overall spend, it's a very small amount that would cause to alleviate a lot of the burden on patients across an entire marketplace than it would be only if you're limiting it to a prescription drug benefit.
Thank you, Samir. So I think next year, we're going to have to make this a half-day hearing to fit in everything that we need, but I want to thank the four of you for your comments. And as we'll move on, we have one final presentation from Dr. Hartong.
And thank you, Representative Noss.
Yeah, you're welcome. It was a good presentation, all four of you. Oh, jeez, you shaved.
Doctor, thank you very much for joining us. Please just introduce yourself and go right ahead.
Great. I'm pleased to be here tonight. My name is Dan Hartong. I'm an associate professor in the College of Pharmacy at Oregon State University, and the focus of my research has been prescription drug policy, and I was asked to come here tonight and talk about my work related to the high cost of drugs for multiple sclerosis, which is something I've been working, thinking about for the last five or six years with neurologists and other researchers at Oregon State and Oregon Health Science University. So although the information I'm presenting here specifically relates to MS, similar patterns and adverse consequences have been observed for other therapeutic classes that you guys have discussed tonight. Some disclosures about myself. As just as a ways of introduction, multiple sclerosis is a progressive immune-mediated neurologic condition associated with significant physical disability and functional impairment. Some recent figures suggest that over a million individuals in America have MS, and the economic burden is significant. Per patient, it's about $70,000 per year, and contrary to kind of just overall drug spend, but within the, this patient group, about 50% of the spend is directly related to their prescription drugs. MS, disease-modifying therapy, which is a cornerstone of treatment, is not curative, but can reduce relapses and delay progression, and most national, international practice guidelines recommend that DMTs should be offered for all individuals with relapsing forms of MS, which is the most common type of MS. So the first DMT approved for MS was approved over 25 years ago in 1993. It's called Betacuron. Currently, there are over 19 drugs that are approved for MS on the market today, and they vary pretty dramatically in mechanisms of action, routes of administration, efficacy and side effect profile. The first 15 years since Betacuron was approved, primary therapies were either interferon-based or gliteramir, all were injections and had to be self-administered by patients. There's three DMTs that are infused but are not used typically because of some tolerability issues. In 2010, the first oral agents were approved, and shortly after, two other oral agents were approved. And most recently, in 2019, there have been three approvals of three additional oral drugs. One of the more important distinguishing features of this therapeutic class is that there had been no generics on the market until relatively recently, in 2015, on the first generic formulation of gliteramir or copaxone became available. This figure is produced by the Institute for Clinical and Economic Review and provides a nice qualitative summary of the comparative effectiveness for these, most of the drugs that are approved for MS. And on this figure, you can see drugs that are more effective are listed further on the right X-axis, and drugs that are safer are listed higher on the Y-axis. And so you can see that some of the infused therapies in green are among the most potent DMTs, but have issues with tolerability. Some of the interferons, which have been around for 20 years or longer, are less effective but have a greater track record and are likely more safe. So thus, among these DMTs, there's great diversity with respect to mechanisms of action, how they're administered, route, tolerability, safety and efficacy. However, one dimension that DMTs do not differ dramatically on is the trajectory of their price over time. And so this figure illustrates the change in the annual cost of therapy estimated from wholesale acquisition costs for all currently available therapies from the date they were introduced through the end of 2019. The black box at the, the black line at the bottom, the dotted line, reflects the changes in price for Betacuron, which was the first one that you would expect just given inflation for medical care, which is about 3% a year. The numbers in the gray area indicate the median annual change in price corresponding to the gray area in that timeline. So you can, as you can see, in the first five or six years after the approval of Betacuron, there is essentially very little change in the annual price as more, as a few other agents came on the market, until about 2002, when the first new interferon product was released, rebif. After that, from 2002 to 2014, median prices increased about 15% per year, and then moderated a bit after 2015 through 2018. And part of this moderation may be related to the release of some of the generic gliteramir products, which are in gray, and kind of dropped down there. I'll show, kind of zoom in on this in a second.
All right.
As of 2019, the median annual price for DMT therapy is $87,000 per year. So here's just kind of insets of this graph, split up by three, the, two of the major categories, the interferons and the orals on the right. And so the, basically And so basically, the same trends kind of hold within these two categories. I put gliteramir in the middle. So this is copaxone, which has been the market leader for DMTs for quite a long time. And you can see that, indeed, that the release of a generic product within this particular drug did seem to moderate the price increases for the branded versions of the drug after in 2014, or 2015, and then in 2017, another version, generic version, was released. So drugs for MS are one of the most expensive classes of drugs for many payers. Because many with MS will become disabled and ultimately qualify for Medicare, costs for this program are particularly high and rapidly rising. So this is from some recent work in JAMA neurology, so, which found that between 2006 and 2016, spending in the Medicare Part D program increased tenfold during this period, and out-of-pocket costs for patients increased sevenfold for patients using these DMT agents. In 2017, the Medicare program spent over $5 billion for 11 self-administered DMTs and nearly $1.5 billion for just branded versions of gliteramir. And so to put these numbers into context, in 2016, Medicare paid approximately 1.4 to all neurologists who serve patients in the Medicare program. So thus, Medicare is spending more than three times, three times more on DMTs for the single, or for, for DMTs than for all neurologists that care for patients who use DMTs. So the high and rising prices negatively affect patients in at least two ways. First, expensive medications are often subject to utilization constraints, such as prior authorizations and step therapy, which require patients and neurologists to provide justification or fail certain therapies in order to be authorized to use other medications that may be preferred for that particular patient. And these administrative hurdles can often delay and disrupt therapy. So in this paper we published earlier this year, we found that in the Medicare Part D plans, that prior authorization policies increased from about 62% to 65% of plans in 2007 to about 77% to 80% of plans in 2016. The other major way that high prices can affect patients is in out-of-pocket costs. So under Part D, out-of-pocket costs are incurred year-round in four sequential phases: deductible, coverage phase, the donut hole, the coverage gap, and then catastrophic coverage. Importantly, cost sharing for many of these drugs is directly based on undiscounted list price. So in the same paper, we reported that out-of-pocket for patients using a DMT was about $6,000 a year, and actually highest for the first initial months when patients went through the coverage gap essentially, and then made it through the other side to get to the catastrophic coverage portion of their benefit. Also importantly, there's no current cap on out-of-pocket costs for Part D beneficiaries, and patients continue to pay 5% throughout the year. So there's no cap. So historically, this is, no, you can't see this, but historically, patients' largest out-of-pocket costs occurred during the coverage gap of the donut hole, where they paid 100% of drug costs until reaching catastrophic coverage. To alleviate this important financial burden for patients, provisions of the Affordable Care Act and some later legislation gradually closed the coverage gap by reducing out-of-pocket liability from 100%, essentially in 2010 to 25% in 2019. And some other work that we're working on, we've found that because DMT prices also increased during the same period by about 2.5-fold, that actually closure of the coverage gap, which should have helped patients in terms of reducing their out-of-pocket exposure, had very little effect on their actual out-of-pocket costs, which remained essentially unchanged from 2010 to 2019. And we did some simulations and found that if DMT prices had remained unchanged or only increased at 3% a year, closing this coverage gap would have reduced out-of-pocket costs by a couple thousand dollars, or about a third, which is shown in the blue columns here. Thus, we conclude that escalating prices have largely undermined the policy intent of the Affordable Care Act in closing the Part D donut hole. So I'm going to skip this for time and just close with a couple other comments. So in closing, similar to other drugs in other categories, over the past 25 years, the cost of drugs for MS have spiraled upwards with both ever-increasing launch costs and consistently large annual price increases. While the exact reasons for this are not clear, it's a simple explanation is that companies can raise prices because they're, they need to maximize profits for their shareholders and for seeking financial growth for their companies. For any particular product, the easiest way to do this is through price escalation. However, unlike other consumer goods, pharmaceutical companies are unconstrained by market forces that stabilize prices for other products. This fundamental dysfunction is likely exacerbated by some of the things that we've discussed today: the opaque and convoluted web that connects manufacturers, payers, pharmacies, and wholesalers, and the PBMs to the distribution channels. So as I've highlighted, with MS, it's increasingly common with other conditions where biologics are used, and branded drug companies often operate as monopolies that can increase prices with little recourse for payers and patients. So for MS, these monopolistic conditions have been intensified because of the relatively non-interchangeability and uniqueness of products in this space, as well as the relative lack of any downward pressure from any generic on the scene until at least 2015. So, and with that, I'll take some questions.
Thank you, doctor. And I think your last set of comments might have answered this question, but from the, some of the charts, it looked like somewhere around 2006 or 2008, the prices increased rather significantly from how they'd been increasing before that.
Right.
Any insight into that period of time and why that was?
So, I mean, you know, I'll just flip back to this, the main picture here. So at 2015, you know, in addition to the release of a generic version of copaxone, which it could have moderated potentially the trajectory of the other drugs, there's just been an increased scrutiny of companies since at least 2015, and like annual increases in price. And so it's probably a combination of both. I think that one thing's that, you know, that's contrary to other consumer products is that during this 2000 to 2014 period, you've had many, many agents come online, and that's only just escalated the prices during this, this period, contrary to other kind of consumer products, so.
But maybe, a question we got in from the public, and you might not know the answer to this, but want to ask for the record at least. Someone asked, "Why is my MS drug, Rebif, $7,800 per month in the U.S. and $9 per month in the U.K.?"
I mean, so there's two interesting points to that question. One is Rebif has been on the market since about 2002. And so, you know, why does it, and at that point, it costs probably $20,000 a year. Why does it cost $80,000 or $90,000 now versus $20,000 then? It's unclear. In terms of the U.K., the U.K. sets prices and dictates what drugs are going to be covered by the National Health Service, so they're basically price setters essentially.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, doctor, very much.
Thank you.
So we're now going to move to the public comment portion of the public hearing. As stated at the beginning, we're going to rotate around. My understanding is we have one person in Medford who's requested to offer some public comment. Then we'll move to the folks we have here who have signed up already. In the interest of time, we'll ask if everyone could please try to keep their comments to around two minutes. I would say, would encourage everyone to submit any written public comments to us at rxprices@oregon.gov. Any comments that you submit in writing will be published on our website and incorporated. We are submitting a report to the legislature in December, and any and all the comments we receive will be made part of that report to the legislature. So we'll start with the public comment in Medford, if that's ready. And maybe the first three up here, if you want to come up, will be Charles Erickson, Christopher Friend, and Lee Mercer.
We are live and ready to hear from the person who is in Medford.
They actually are going to do a call now.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to Mr. Erickson, please. Mr. Erickson, if you're ready, go right ahead.
I can hardly hear him.
Oh, sorry.
My name's Charles Erickson. I'm a native Oregonian. I live on the South Coast. I didn't really, didn't, we didn't get notice of this, so I didn't really get prepared real well. But I want to start with the pharmacies in our area, particularly Rite Aid, where if you don't have insurance, I went in there and I bought some lamozetrin, a generic drug, and the charge, they wanted to charge $406 for it. I went ahead and did some checking with Buy Mart, and they said, you know, you could use the, I don't know, GoodRx program. And the charge was $33. I also connected with Coast Community Health, and they have a pharmacy there. They told me that they charge $1 over their cost, and they're, for that drug, a three-month supply is $22. There's something wrong. And I have, Rite Aid has been sued all over the United States, and so has Walmart for gouging people. You know, we don't gouge people during crises, you know, hurricanes or whatever. We don't do that, but we do it to the healthcare. It's terrible. A friend of mine in Newport, he wasn't able to come, Bill Lackner, and he's been on Oregon Field Guide many times. He got a prescription for a skin cancer treatment, a cream, and the cheapest place he could find was Walmart. And he went back to his doctor, it was $251, he went back, he says, "I can't afford it." His wife is working, he's 80 years old. His wife is working so, you know, they can get some sort of, she's got coverage. But he went back to his doctor, he says, "What can you do?" And he said, "Well, I'll tell you what. There's a pharmacy in Longview, Washington," and he got it for 55 bucks. Oregon is failing. We're failing the seniors, you know, and it's, this is long overdue. I thank you guys for at least trying. But what's going on? It's dysfunctional. The doctor's right. This is a dysfunctional system that's not being addressed. I contacted, and I want to leave all of this information with you, but I contacted our Attorney General over all this, and I, and you know what? After I started gathering all this information, I contacted all the Attorney Generals in the Western United States. The only place that didn't get back to me was Oregon. Jeff Merkley finally got back to me, and he's addressing it. But Oregon is failing. It's failing us. And I'm surprised I wasn't even contacted to come to this because I have submitted so many complaints about this. It's not just me, it's all the seniors who don't have insurance or are outside of it for whatever reason, whether they haven't applied for it yet or whatever. But it's hardly fair. It's hardly fair that, that we're allowing price gouging, and nothing's being done about it. And I contact the pharmacy board, "Well, we can't do anything about pricing." I mean, I don't get it. I mean, why, I don't get it. I mean, I think that's probably about all I need to say.
Thank you very much.
And can I give you this?
Please do, yes. Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's move on, Mr. Friend?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Christopher Friend. I'm the Oregon Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. We're a membership-based organization with over 8,000 members across the state of Oregon. As the 4005 task force convened, Governor Brown addressed the task force by writing, "Transparency is an essential component of cost savings for the state as a, excuse me, as a purchaser, and for Oregonians as consumers and taxpayers." And ACS CAN couldn't agree more. When we're talking about drug pricing and drug affordability, it seems that this body and DCBS is studying the long-term costs and the supply chain, but there's things that policymakers in Oregon can do right now to help cancer patients. Routinely, cancer patients and their caregivers that we represent are unable to budget or even predict the cost of their life-saving medications. Frequently, oncology therapies and prescriptions associated with a cancer diagnosis are subject to co-insurance rather than a fixed dollar copay. While carriers will claim, and they did tonight, that a tiered formulary is designed to incentivize the use of a lower-cost medication, the reality is for the patients that ACS CAN represents, a lower-cost medication is rarely available. Indeed, the greatest need for transparency around the cost of medications is actually the true dollar cost of prescriptions subject to co-insurance. Not only is co-insurance a relatively new concept for many consumers in the healthcare environment, but especially those who are recently diagnosed with cancer. The cost-sharing mechanism makes it nearly impossible for patients to anticipate their out-of-pocket costs and for patients to be able to predict their family's bottom-line budget. After all, if a patient doesn't have enough money at the pharmacy counter, they don't receive the prescriptions that they need, which keep them alive. Let's see here, over the last three years, ACS CAN and our patient advocacy partners have offered a number of policy solutions to increase transparency around co-insurance costs. Those policy solutions have gone unanswered in the Oregon Legislature, and would just like to leave you with one more reminder of Governor Brown's remarks. Consumer interests should be at the forefront of recommendations. Solutions that educate Oregon consumers about drug prices and help them manage their expenses are essential elements to cost containment. Oregonians are experiencing an ever-increasing copay and co-insurance. That's exactly what ACS CAN's policy perspectives have done. These policy solutions aren't groundbreaking. They've been passed in a number of states: California, Delaware, Louisiana, Maine, Maryland, and Vermont. And the Insurance Commissioner in Colorado passed a bulletin which helps to provide more transparency in predictable costs for patients. As this group convenes for future meetings, I encourage stakeholders to think about affordability of prescriptions and transparency so patients can anticipate their costs, save, and be able to afford those medications at the pharmacy counter. Thanks for the opportunity to testify this evening.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Mercer, Insurance Commissioner, STOFC, and Drug Price Transparency Group. I'm a former board president and current member of Healthcare for All Oregon. We're a statewide coalition of 120-member organizations, including unions, churches, community groups throughout the state. We have 15 chapters, and we have 36,000 people in our database, and that database grows by 600 to 800 people a month as we reach out around the state and talk to people about building a universal healthcare system. And we hear from people around the state about how the healthcare system is too expensive, and often how pharma is so expensive. Several of our people on our website have listed Lawrence from Manzanita, who struggles to pay for his much-needed prostate medication that is now eight times more expensive since he started taking the drug several years ago. Bill from LaGrande, who's a good friend of mine, was told his prescription for a topical salve for low cholesterol would cost him $800 for just one month. And Delta in McMinnville, who pays $900 out-of-pocket every month for her diabetes, high cholesterol, and antidepressant medications. The rest of my comments are here, are in your hands. But I wanted to thank Representative Nos for the work group he did for a year. This is like deja vu, because it was in this room that for months, we listened to the PBM folks, the insurance companies, and the pharma telling us that it's just too complicated to solve. And I'm glad, I want to thank you all for taking this on. You're making the first steps. If you remember Alexander the Great and the Gordian Knot, the complexity they're talking about looks like the Gordian Knot. And you are like Alexander here to cut this knot and figure out ways we can move forward to control drug prices in Oregon. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. So next, our final three, John Mullen, Mira Hack, and Courtney Holstein.
Hello, Commissioners and members. For the record, John Mullen, I'm here on behalf of AARP and also on behalf of the Oregon Coalition for Affordable Prescriptions. I realize that this is the end of a long day, and there's not a lot of time to talk, but I wanted to talk about the distinction, first of all, about AARP and OCAP. AARP is engaged with OCAP, but because of national restrictions, AARP cannot join organizations. So as some of you know, I was lobbying for it on behalf of AARP during the session, and I'm now continuing to work as a volunteer. Just a couple of things that I'll say about AARP in interest of time. There's an ad running on television that AARP produced, and the spokesperson says, "Prescriptions don't work if you can't afford to take them." And that's an obvious statement. In the midst of all of the complexities that are being discussed tonight, it comes down to issues about cost and transparency as far as AARP is concerned. We have 510,000 members in the state of Oregon, so as you can imagine, we have heard a lot of individual stories from people expressing their concerns about not being able to afford their medication. I'm just going to say just one in the interest of time. This is a common complaint. "I've had to split my pills in half in order to afford them." This is Mark W. from Corvallis. There are a number of other stories, and I will submit something in writing. I'm going to move on to OCAP now. Yesterday, actually, I was installed as the new president for OCAP, and tonight I'm here before you, talking to you about concerns again about transparency and cost. OCAP, like AARP, is heard from many people through social media, through hearing stories from people from being out in the community. Many low-income Oregonians, including seniors, people of colors, and people of color, and individuals with disabilities, are simply going without the medications that they need. And we all have heard information tonight about how manufacturers are raising prices of drugs, and in addition, the DCBS initial information that we have that talks about the top 25 drugs and the increases that pertain to those. We're hopeful that there will be additional steps taken by the Oregon Legislature in 2020. OCAP is coming back with another bill about drug importation, which we're hopeful will have a successful discussion at the state legislature this time around. In closing, I just want to say, again, I'll submit some comments, but in listening to all the testimony tonight, just really to leave you with the idea that drug costs and transparency are really important issues to Oregonians, and anything that you can do along those lines will be much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Insurance Commissioner Stolfi, my name is Myra Hack. I live in northeast Portland. I'm 32, and I have Crohn's disease. There are several medications that help alleviate my symptoms, and all of them have outrageous prices in the United States. Humira is the main prescription used to treat Crohn's. Abvie, the maker of Humira, just raised the price an additional 9.7% in January. In the Department of Consumer and Business Services report, Humira is listed as the most costly drug, and the drug contributing to the most increasing premiums in Oregon. My medical costs exceeded $300,000 before insurance last year when I took Humira injections. Now I'm no longer able to afford them. Now I take four pills a day of Lealda. That's $1,200 before insurance. I don't have the option of skipping a dose to save money, because it would set me back further in my treatment. I also do chemo monthly to keep my treatment, keep my symptoms at bay. Chemo causes an intense level of exhaustion, which makes it impossible to hold down a full-time job. It also deletes your immune system, so even if you do have a day job, you would call out sick all the time due to the germ exposure. The type of chemo I'm on costs $14,000 annually. It hasn't worked so far, so I'll eventually skip to a more expensive kind. In addition to these expensive, I also use three different creams for various complications that Crohn's causes. That's an extra $100 a month for all three. I often run out sooner. I'm well-educated and intellectually capable of having a career, but having this disease and having to spend so much money on treatment keeps me from meaningfully contributing to the economy through working or spending money. I shouldn't have to live like this at 32 years old. These prescriptions cost pennies on the dollar in Canada. I understand that pharmaceutical companies need to make profits to make new medications, but this is out of control. Medications I need to survive shouldn't be completely unattainable to me. Manufacturers like Abvie must be held accountable for price gouging Oregonians.
Thank you very much for sharing with us.
Right. Thank you all. For the record, my name is Courtney Holstein, and this evening I am here on behalf of the Cascade AIDS Project in Prism Health, which is our LGBTQ+ primary care clinic in the Portland metro area. And I know I'm the last person, so I'm just going to get right to it.
It's my clinic.
Cut all the fluff. So currently, Truvata is the only drug approved by the FDA to use as PrEP, pre-exposure prophylaxis. Truvata comes with a yearly price tag in Oregon of over $20,000. Likewise, for individuals living with HIV, the average annual cost for a year's course of treatment can exceed $39,000. And just for reference, that is equal to about 65% of Oregon's annual median income. Furthermore, because pharmaceutical manufacturers place such a high price tag on their medications, HIV prevention and treatment drugs are often subject to high co-insurance rates and utilization management programs, which there's a lot of research that lead, that says that these types of programs lead to poor health outcomes and higher rates of transmission. To add insult to injury, PrEP is actually available in many provinces in Canada for about $250 a month, as opposed to $1,700 in the United States, and it's provided for about $30 a month in Australia. So exorbitant drug costs often require Oregonians to make hard choices, and this is really a lived reality for several of the clients that we work with, including Louise and Kyle, who struggle to pay close to $5,000 a year out-of-pocket for their medications. It is really important to recognize that HIV disproportionately impacts the most vulnerable in our communities, and transmission is on the rise among young people and women of color. So high prices can effectively block these groups from life-saving medications to underserve communities. So this is absolutely about health of our communities, but this is also about equity. And lastly, I just want to leave with one thing that I didn't think I could be surprised anymore, but I was definitely shocked when I was looking at DCBS's own reports of the information that you've all received through this program. And out of the top 25 most expensive drugs reported by insurers, four of them, four of them are for the prevention or treatment of HIV. Also, one of the drugs listed is for the treatment of Hep C, which, for various high-risk populations for HIV, there is also a crossover of Hep C diagnoses as well. So this is really important, because people who are under a PrEP regimen, they can live healthy lives completely unaffected by HIV. PrEP can reduce the rate of transmission up to 95%. So we have the tools. We have the tools to end HIV in Oregon, but prices set by the manufacturers just won't allow us to do so. Thank you for your time, and I hope that we can act urgently to address this issue for Oregonians. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to thank all the panelists, all the presenters for joining us tonight, all those here in the audience, all those in Astoria, Medford, and Pendleton, my fellow moderators up here. You know, we want to encourage everyone here and listening to keep submitting your stories and your questions and your comments to us. We've received over 100 already as of tonight. As I said, all of this information will be included in a report that we submit to the legislature in December. All of that information will be critical to help inform these and other policymakers about what steps we can take going forward. If you'd like to say anything, or, okay?
No.
Well, again, thank you all very much, and I'll close this public hearing.